Understand if you, when you have a daughter, you'll understand.
Well.
Just trying to keep my son from being a troublemaker, I.
Well, I had no, I had no hope in that because they were too much of a block that at forty-five, forty-five, we had a daughter. And so I was way past my limits.
I mean, St. Janet, but nobody know that you're listening, really, really, my way is long term right here.
He sold his house.
He did?
Yeah.
Yes, the new neighbors already moved in. Okay, so.
And he, the girls don't know Harold and the girls.
And Melanie, what Melanie went over there and told me I owe Harold two hundred dollars because he had a bicycle that she owned. And she's coming up to drive it with the bicycle. Wow, yeah.
He told the girls he was just gonna put a yard sale, he said just go and get it.
Well, Melanie did. And then I had to go pay Harold for everything she got.
Ready? All right, at six, at six o'clock, we'll call this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council to order. We do have a quorum. Appreciate everybody being here. Welcome to our guests. It's good to have somebody here. It's lonely sometimes when nobody comes to visit. Kathy, you gonna join us in our invocation, leader invocation? Thank you.
Thank you for the time that community planning has put for the zoning and managers. So we've worked for, we're making for, um, all the hard work, we're creating, we're just helping us to have like a shapefulness and certainly. Help us to see anything that needs to be changed. But thank you for all the things.
Amen. Please join for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for citizen participation tonight, and we'll jump right into our discussion items.
Um, well, we have John Walz here, and John is gonna present the work that they've done on our future land use plan and where we are on our zoning. He's also, I'm gonna ask him also to talk a little bit about the next step with regard to our subdivision ordinance, revising that. So you're the show, buddy.
Welcome, John.
Counsel, thank y'all for being here tonight. I can't imagine what other things y'all wanna do at six o'clock except be here and listen to all the stuff I'm about to share with y'all. Uh, my name is John Walz. I'm a planner. Uh, I'm a Louisiana native, and I'm very proud of that. Um, I was a city planner for Ruston, Louisiana, and I really get to use a lot of that experience here. Y'all are very similar to a town that I grew up in, Duboc, Louisiana, two thousand, twenty-five hundred people. Um, and just a little bit of insight on who I am and what my motivations are. Duboc was a timber town, it was a one-ordered town. And the business folded, moved out. And, uh, over time, the school closed, my dad's pharmacy on Main Street closed, he had to relocate to another town. So it was a very personal, uh, change for Walzes, for all of us. And I was, that was, you know, I was a young kid when all that happened, and it struck an impression on me, made an impression that surely there's something that could have happened to help prevent that or ease the blow. And Duboc has never been the same since then. So, um, they are trying to recover grassroots, um, you know, citizen participation. But, um, motivation here is, uh, how to help Mount Vernon prepare for the future, um, because change is happening, change always happens. Um, y'all have something that's worth protecting, which is small-town charm. Duboc had a small-town charm as well. They did not have the foresight or the communication, I believe, that y'all are, have already done and y'all are wanting to do continually um, to help with new employers coming in or old employers moving out. Those are big economic changes that y'all can't prepare for. Um, so what we did was a two-part, um, plan. This is the land use plan. It's really, it's several pages, it's seventy pages. And we try to make it an easier read, but it reflects a greater document, which is the zoning code, and then Craig alluded to the zoning or the subdivision ordinance. They're kind of interconnected. Um, this is a fifteen-slide or seventeen-slide document that summarizes seventy-five thousand words, three hundred pages. So I'm gonna do my best, I'm not gonna go through all the ins and outs of it, but there's a lot of legal bulk behind this. Um, so what our main goals were to update y'all's plan, which was last touched, you know, from the seventies to two thousand twenty was the most recent. It was a, a landscape ordinance, I believe. Um, from that, we wanted to modernize it, we wanted to simplify it as well, because I've seen codes overkill. That was not my goal. Small towns need a lean code that's easy to use, um, that really projects your vision. So that's why we use the color palette, that's why we use the, the links in the document, just to make, let's say I'm a new developer and I wanna build in Mount Vernon. Well, y'all have standards, well, high standards, it's gonna be easy to communicate those standards. Um, so we simplified, uh, several things that I'll point out later, but we also are pretty crystal clear on what those standards are. And it can change, it's a living document, so this is not a one-and-done. Um, like Craig said, the next step is getting the subdivision code in, uh, up to speed as well. Um, because zoning and subdivision talk to each other a lot. All right. Um, so next slide. There's my team that I got to work with, uh, seasoned veterans, Hunter has expertise in parks. He's already spoken with y'all about the, uh, Little Creek Park and, uh, the potentials there for, uh, the grant monies. Um, and then Zach Clark is based, uh, he's from Allen, Texas, and so he has our big city perspective here. Uh, and I like to think of myself as one foot in, uh, small town, one foot in midtown. So our agenda overview, work with, uh, we're gonna go over the plan hierarchy, uh, where y'all been with the last fifteen years. Uh, our brief process with the land use ordinance and the zoning code updates. Um, we issued a public survey. We ran some demographics, that's pretty boilerplate for planning efforts. Uh, I broke down the new updated list of things that I touch in on the narrative and also on the zoning code itself. Uh, and then probably the most important things that come from a land use plan is updating your future land use in your zone. So I'm gonna briefly explain what those are, how they work, how you can find them. Um, also, I was gonna note, this is not a formal presentation, as much as I may have sort of established it, I very much like feedback, questions, uh, at any point. And also, here's the plan, print of that plan, if y'all wanna look through it at any time, if anyone wants to see it.
Just gonna set it right.
There. Um, so what is the land use plan, what are the benefits? Uh, it's a strategic plan, and we, uh, use y'all's projected numbers, uh, where is Mount Vernon gonna be in five to ten years? Uh, we're not, we can't predict the future, but we can repass. Um, we can see that y'all have a younger population, and if they stay in Mount Vernon, that is your population thirty years from now. So our purview is ten years, you can do fifteen, you can do twenty years. Uh, per Texas law, there's no set established, um, year range, so. Um, but we examine current conditions, so where Mount Vernon is right now, and then where Mount Vernon wants to be. What are some things kind of creeping, creeping out, um, outside of, uh, this region, you know, uh, Tesla work, uh, Tesla factory, any sort of major supply chain movements that may affect, and economic trends that may affect, uh, y'all's town. And then we try to respond with a regulatory framework, that's the zoning ordinance, the, the legal ease. Uh, and this is, uh, we write for the developer and the citizen in mind. Uh, so it is a component of a comprehensive plan, uh, there's land use, transportation, housing, um, economic development. And we're, we did a land use with a bit of transportation and housing kind of intertwined, but y'all already have a dedicated housing study that we just read off of, and we, we pulled data from. Uh, and then ultimately, you typically use land use plans to update your zoning and future land use map. We did a pretty broad-scale, uh, update to y'all's zoning that I don't think could have been done in just one session. Uh, so I think a land use plan was, was warranted, and that's coming from my experience as a city planner. All right, next slide. So here's a, a brief overview of where y'all been, uh, since twenty-ten, comp plan, uh, so this is kind of an update to that comp plan fifteen years later. Uh, I've read through all of these documents, uh, we've written the strategic plan, which was honed in on the north and south corridor predominantly. This land use plan expands to citywide, so we're looking at citywide land uses. Um, y'all had worked with your, uh, utility systems, uh, updating studies there and how y'all need to grow your, uh, your utility lines. Uh, we did the parks master plan, got a grant from that, it's an immediate success. Uh, housing study on, um, where are any sort of new employers, uh, how that's gonna affect your housing demand, where your housing capacity is, how many houses y'all can bring in and make it filled. Uh, and then those, uh, capital improvements in annual financial reports that y'all run annually. Uh, site visit, uh, this is all very standard, uh, inventory, um, I like GIS, so we implement some map data. Uh, ran, needs an, uh, planning analysis, makes recommendations, re- review, and we're kind of between review and final plan right now, uh, since we'll put it for adoption on the fourteen. So we ran the public survey, um, key underlying points here is people are concerned about job availability and they really want more single-family out. Um, they're concerned, and they want higher-quality public spaces. Um, I'm not too surprised here that grocery stores were pretty high on the list, as well as restaurants. That's, anytime I pull people on what you want in your town, it's usually those two things. Um, so maybe get some rich data there, and I can go through, if y'all have any sort of questions, go ahead. Next slide.
Do you get into it later, like recreational space, what people are moving for, or just, is that just a narrative at this point?
Uh, it's, it was out of scope for land use.
Okay.
Um, we should have covered that in the parks plan, we didn't.
I think we did.
So some interesting demographics, uh, the chart to your left, y'all probably seen a hundred times already, it's just a steady conservative growth, which is better than dying, better than trending, uh, it's better than black line. Um, we, we wrote kind of juggling this trend in mind, but also, what if y'all had five hundred more jobs drop in? Which, that would really change y'all's town. Um, so we, we tried to plan for most likely your growth track here, but keeping in mind the extreme shock, um, that could happen. Could happen to any town near GFW, really. Um, oh, sorry, back. Uh, some other stats that I like to track is, um, people that live and work inside your city. So I usually like to recommend, and, and this data's taken from twenty-thirteen, so roughly ten years, um, y'all been on a positive swing. It did peak in two thousand eighteen, wasn't quite sure what happened at that point, and then it kind of went down, scooted downhill a little bit. But two thousand eighteen was a high-water mark for y'all, across the board. Traffic, um, just overall vehicle trips, um, but we're still very much at, at an increase from two thousand thirteen. But the number that I like is people that live and work inside the city. Um, not knocking people that, you know, commute or, uh, commute one way or another, uh, but people that live and work inside the city tend to be pretty invested. Um, so I like to see that number grow and then foster, but, um, you can be a bedroom community, uh, you can be a employer community. Um, there's no right or wrong answer there, but I usually like to see that middle number, uh, grow. And then, uh, we did, we pulled text doc traffic counts, and we also pulled, uh, crash data, and there's some correlation there with your busy intersection. One thing I'll note is the red and yellow line from text doc, they're anticipating, uh, everything, uh, east of the thirty-seven interchange to increase, uh, based on, to get more congested than it is right now. So just to be aware, to be prepared. Uh, most likely, people commuting towards Greenville, towards GFW. All right, uh, and then we also pulled, uh, some typical information, y'all had a pretty evenly spread, uh, H pyramid. Anything that surprises y'all looking at this? Anything you want me to try to break down and explain?
That slide's, that's not in, not in the slide deck, actually.
It is.
Is it further out?
I saw it here.
Or just in a different order?
Right here. You can't read it either.
Share it with y'all again. I'll, I'll, uh, I'll be sure to share it with you, since I get back to the office.
You can, listening, I mean, I'm here.
Okay, very.
Yeah, I'm having trouble reading it, honestly.
Note to self, I need to make the text clear. Okay, cool, we can, uh, move on then. So, uh, give me.
She just said that's how you're not gonna get any questions.
That's, that's the trick. So here's a summary of, um, the topics that we've adjusted or even recommended. Uh, we added in a mixed-use zoning, uh, that's very important to keep your downtown culture. Um, that's very much, uh, kind of the new planning trend, well as to make walkable areas like this. Uh, our recommendation is to grow your downtown, add more blocks, like, uh, really, uh, zero setback, uh, shared wall-to-wall structures. Um, maybe y'all have already excelled at here, great foundations, and we just say, hey, bring more of it on. Uh, more than, uh, so knocking it more the better. Uh, we revised the existing zones and land use, uh, also tuned up your setbacks, um, lot size minimums and building envelopes. Um, there's a few new trends that we recommend that really save y'all headaches from traffic congestion, sheer driveways and sheer parking, cross-access easements, especially along major highways. Um, if you don't have them now, you're gonna wish that you had them whenever more and more cars start flooding in. Uh, there's, there's no silver bullet, but there's a bunch of small s- solutions or tools that you can use to prevent tra- uh, traffic congestion. Uh, and there's just a list of other zoning items that we, uh, have added in there. Uh, one thing to note, we updated your signage, uh, sign ordinances. Um, added in cell tower code, that's, that kind of, that's kind of boring there, but, um, this is something that was, uh, had anything to be added, we believe. And then also, uh, like I said, I'm a GIS nerd, uh, we did create a dedicated website for y'all to have, uh, access to all of the zoning and future land use information um, that we've created for this plan.
John, could you comment briefly on parkland dedication and how that works in development and, you know, why that's important?
So we have not added that into the code yet, because we wanted full commitment from everyone. Um, we've seen it a lot in major urban areas, um, as small as Tyler, that if a developer's building three hundred houses or even two hundred houses, um, parkland dedication ordinance is exactly that. By ordinance, you're requiring that developer to dedicate park space because they're bringing in more residents. If you think of your parks as a limited resource, which we know it's not, um, you wanna have a ratio of parks to citizens. You wanna have parks that are accessible to neighborhoods that you can walk to, that's the, the kind of the goal of your vision. So ideally, someone buys a hundred acres, they just flood the area with houses, but they have a park in the middle of it. And that's kind of what the parkland dedication ordinance gets you. By law, they are required to, you can even, um, by law, have them improve that park, not only give you the area, but also give you the money to build that park there and you see it there. You can make them as strict or as lean as you want. Um, but we, we just did not wanna add that in yet because it's kind of all a car, you can add little elements, uh, and we can give you a recommendation of what y'all care to see there.
So that'd be park, that'd be maintained by our parks department.
Uh.
Or maintained by a developer.
Boy.
So it could be developed, uh, the developer maintaining it. Yeah, we saw that, uh, that nice development history report we toured, see, there's a number of different examples of how they incorporated parks into that development that I never thought about.
And those may be private parks. I'll have to see, um, sometimes.
I believe that they are in Providence, I believe they are.
Because it's a quality of life of the citizens, they may wanna just make sure it's, you know, well-kept and manicured. Uh, because true court is sprawling out of control, I'll, I'll tell you that, um, Providence is a great neighborhood. Um, any other questions on parkland or any of that, that list? Um, lighting, we're, uh, suggesting that y'all put most lights where you, that light pollution, this is great for citizens, to keep light out of, out of, uh, regular windows. It's also good for birds, who do, bird migration, um. So any other items on here that y'all questions about? All right, um, future land use, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we simplified it from, I believe that's fourteen, we, uh, condensed it down to nine. And it's, it's a typical, s- and this is, like I said, pretty regular to have open space residential, commercial, and industrial. Um, cities, large cities get created with this, they have hybrid classes, but I kind of kept it, uh, simple here. Um, not much else to note there. So future land use and zoning, um, there's pattern development, uh, that we usually recommend. It's corridors have residential, I'm sorry, have, uh, commercial, so this dark blue is your interstate commercial. Let's see. Uh, this, your light blue is your lighter commercial, your mom-and-pop stores, uh, and your smaller chains. This is kind of like your fast-food joints, uh, if, if y'all want to tap into that, uh, interstate commerce. Um, here's your core residential here with that gridded street pattern. And, uh, we, for future, sake of future land use, we still see and predict, and we recommend that y'all keep a good agricultural ban, uh, around your agricultural town. We don't wanna lose farmland, farmland is the most sensitive and susceptible thing to development to sprawl. That's why we recommend a good bit of open space in agriculture. And also the mixed-use center, the dark purple, deep purple there is, that's where we're at currently with, uh, the downtown, Main Street there. And industrial, the other thing to note from the previous plan, y'all had a little bit of industrial, like two percent, based on acres, right there. Um, from my understanding, that's unused space, and we shifted it down to this bottom corner here. Uh, that's outside, for the most part, that's outside city limits that you can see here, so it's just the future land use. Uh, any questions on the map? So mixed resi- I'll, I'll answer that question a little bit, I did make a, a picture, that makes it a bit easier to explain. Zoning similar to future land use, we've condensed the number of classes by a little bit. Um, we broke it down into, uh, a good way to think of it as intensity, so agricultural homesteads is your largest lots and your least dense housing, very spread out. Um, this is the one zone that, right now, we have it, may allow for one accessory dwelling unit. Because my thought is, you have, uh, such a large acreage that you can have family live on the same lot. But if y'all are comfortable with that, that's an easy one to cross out. Uh, everywhere else, we, we don't go that route. Uh, R one is your one to two-acre lots, R two is your typical single-family residential that I showed with y'all, the light green core. R three, you start getting more and more intense with your duplex, triplex, quadplex, all full, R four, which y'all don't have any right now, uh, is full-blown apartment complex. Mixed-use town center, that's your downtown area, that's probably the most complicated code to type, but, once again, I'm a firm believer that, uh, in order to create something special like a downtown, you have to have some pretty curated nuanced code.
What is the complex up on, uh, on the gas station, what is it currently?
Which gas station?
Logan's Point?
Oh, yeah, Logan's Point. If it's not multi-family, what is it coded as right now?
Which one is that?
Logan's Point.
Is that the one next to the school?
That's, no, that's one of.
Behind the school.
Behind Loves, by, uh, by Loves, that whole book.
I'm just curious what it's coded now, what it will be.
It's coded now, it's multi-family, yeah. It'll, it'll still be in R four.
Okay. I said, you mentioned we didn't have any, and I'm like, I just wondered what that was coded.
I don't know if those are complexes.
They're apartments.
Apartments, full-blown apartments, okay. So we got that.
Think what, there's two hundred and something units there?
Pretty good-sized apartment complex, yeah, yeah.
I'll have to see, they, they, I'll, I'll make sure that the current zoning, um, didn't reflect that either. Um, I'll.
Kathy was off that day.
Community facilities, all are your, uh, public facilities, um, we've seen churches group into this as well. So, uh, parish, or not parish, sorry, Louisiana, uh, county, city, and, uh, not, not nonprofit, but, um.
School district.
School district and churches, or in that classification. B one is your, we kind of titled this as much as we could to kind of convey what they're talking about, uh, neighborhood business community and regional neighborhood. Is your, uh, very local mom-and-pop shop community is, in this case, would be a grocery store. Um, and then full-blown regional is your driveway, that's probably the, the spectrum that you're looking at. And light industrial is your business parks, general industrial, um, is, we're not gonna say smoke stacks, but it's much more intense, something that you want in the corner of your town, if I don't, um. Light, I think manufacturing does fall into light industrial as well. The way that we classify it is what's kind of coming off the property, what's skewing off the property. Um, that's the differentiation there. All right, next one. Okay, answer, um, I think it's the next slide, but there's a, an outlook of your zoning class. It correlates to your future land use for the most part, um, but this, we're kind of in this realm of where does Mount Vernon want to be in the future? So, um, some of the zoning does not tuck into the future land use perfectly. Some industrial there. Okay, that's what it was. So right now, that, that's the school, we're calling that R three, but we can change that to R four. Uh, right now, your current zone is, uh, surrounded by a band of agriculture, that's what we're kind of pushing out, future land use area. We're thinking that this could populate with low-density residential, and this remain your highest-dense point. Uh, I think there are eight, eight-acre lots, right there. Okay, um, next slide. So this is how future land use and zoning work together. Um, I like to think of it as buckets, so your future land use are your buckets, and the zones are your little squares. Um, zones can be in different buckets, so for agriculture, it's in both agriculture, future land use, and residential states, your large spaced-out areas. If I am a landowner and currently my property's zone is R one, and I wanna rezone it, I wanna change the land use of it, we're saying that, not strictly by law, but your options are agriculture or community facilities. A better example would be, if I own property, mixed residential, and it's currently B one, well, I wanna change it to an apartment complex, or I'm gonna change it to a duplex here or a triplex here. So it's, s- it's creating this parameter for land use to change, but it's still an overall pattern for the next ten or fifteen years. And I'm a bit easier to say. What we're doing is, give me.
So in the mixed residential, the community facilities, are you talking about like the grocery stores, the churches?
Just churches, city, and county properties.
In the mixed residential?
In the mixed, well, they're in all the classes except for industrial.
But it'd be acceptable in that mixed residential, as well as a mom-and-pop business in a mixed residential.
Yeah, because it has the B one, that's what.
Right, like a beauty shop, and, you know, mixed to a neighborhood.
Basically what we have right now?
Pretty much, yeah.
And we do have to be careful with regulating churches as well, that is, uh, state law separates church and state, so, um, churches are kind of allowed anywhere.
Jesus is good.
Yes.
Yeah, don't get in his way.
I'm not touching that.
Let's stay out of his way, stay the course.
So mixed residential, we, we coined it that because you have that B one low-intensity business pretty much, uh, with the other residential classes.
So are we gonna get into like today, or we're just staying high-level, but like with B one in a mixed residential neighborhood, things like parking, what comes into that, that you can only have like free parking places, or, I mean, how do you integrate a small mom-and-pop business into a residential neighborhood?
So if you go back to the future land use. So if you go back to the future land use map. Mixed residential, which is the lightest green, you mainly see on the corridors. So it's places that are currently residential, but they're on a corridor. And that's, to me, it's the toughest thing to, to zone for. Because if you have a corridor, it's, there's gonna be pressure to convert to commercial if it's not already. We can take V one out if that becomes an issue, but.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand and trying to ask, I, I mean, obviously when we zoom into the city, we can see exactly where that is, but I'm just thinking, you know, uh, my, my neighbor doesn't want me setting up a machine shop in my garage, you know what I mean? And so, how do you, I mean, if I have two cars sitting outside, okay, maybe, but what if I had ten cars sitting outside? Where, it is a rural community, we're trying to clean it up a little bit, but you know, we still have people parking in their yards.
So I don't pay services or just.
Just parking in their grass, so.
We, some of it's gonna fall along code, code enforcement, but we did put that vehicles must be parked on paved material, um.
But occupancy rates also help to manage that as well, so like you're getting, that'll dictate how many parking spaces you need per occupancy, you know, some businesses, if it's, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, like if, like if it's a, a hair salon, okay, they're gonna have to have three parking places, okay? But the zone keeps it, so you kinda play in that a little bit, and, and people can always apply for exceptions, I'm sure. But I'm just kinda like, based off of what people hear, I mean, I, I know, we go out with this and then somebody starts, decides to start home business next door, great, we want them to, but, you know? I, I know, I know I'm playing devil's advocate here, but you know what's gonna happen.
But there'd be parking regulations, yes, bar B one, these are your parking requirements for.
That's right, right. Yeah, what, what y'all pay me, I wanna get reelected.
Exactly.
We're gonna give you a rate, Marla, a hundred percent.
Here, here it goes, right Craig?
There are some, um, screening and buffering that we, anytime that there's more intense use getting plotted next to a less intense use, uh, we're saying, hey, bill fence, plant trees, kinda prevent that spill over, um, but there are parking minimums that we, we updated the parking code as well.
Okay, that, that was the easy answer to my question, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, didn't realize we were getting to this.
I probably wouldn't, weird.
No, um. So any other questions here? Well, the future land use, y'all aren't married to this, y'all aren't abiding by this, but anytime that y'all have a ruling, you can say, we were inspired by this or it's kinda based on it, but you're not locked in. We'll say people change future land uses, um, that was my extension city planner, council can skirt out of it every now and then. But y'all kinda need a basis to, to work around. I, I hope that the majority of rulings are all within this, we try to make it realistic as well. Which those need to be issued very carefully.
Yeah, very, very conservatively.
I mean, you go back to the. But you go back to the thing of the car shop, you know, if I start painting cars out of my garage, you know, that's gonna, what'd you say, it's the things that get put out, mess up your business? So that would keep you from being able to do that in residential neighborhood because that's the grade, that's the bottom right one. And it's not, I mean, am I right?
Yeah, yeah.
We can pull up the zoning code of, of all the other land use. So here is, that's the plan itself that we're looking at. And then this is the zoning code that currently y'all have, uh, scanned copy, paper copy also is in uni code. And what we did was migrate it to a more user friendly, kind of attractive, uh, document. If you zoom out a little bit, you'll see both pages. Oh, by the way. Okay, so if you click on chapter three, use standard. No, that's just considered the ones.
That's cool.
Might be chapter two of that. Then if you start scrolling. So this is the snippet of what these zones are meaning is, hey, we, you have a bound of principal permitted uses, uh, that you're allowed to do. And then you have conditional uses that will typically come to council or finding zoning commission that y'all grant per condition, y'all, y'all use that language. Um, here's your minimum lot sizes, uh, then we do a nice little diagram to kind of explain what that looks like. And if you.
And that's a big deal, because people come in all the time and you just have this.
And it's whatever sort of graphics I wanna also.
No, this is good.
This is great, this is so needed, yeah.
See. I wanna start the chapter one that I'm trying to remember, we're out of time, so I'm very, if you scroll down, we're gonna do a little bit of legal ease. Go on, there it is. Okay, that's your summary of all of your zones next to each other, what the minimum lot areas are, uh, your setbacks, where they fall in the future land use. You can zoom in whenever you have it on your computer, uh, it's a very tiny text right now. And the next page, we'll get into your actual land uses itself. Um, y'all had about sixty defined uses, we added two hundred fifty, up to three hundred percent. I say you can't go specific enough, but, um, some cities have thousand, thousand of us, so we, we didn't wanna do overkill. What you can do, the neat thing with these terms is, uh, the cleaning place commercial defined as, whatever you wanna define a cleaning place as, if it's ever ambiguous and someone tries to come up with an idea that you're saying, oh no, I meant to say this, this is where you add it into the code by definition.
So, one other question, so with like the industrial foundation we're trying to bring here. And as we're moving forward and we're trying to figure out what we're gonna do, I noticed on the site plan, you know, industrial brings jobs. There's all sorts of industrial, right? But one percent of the, is all we're gonna allot for something like that? Or are we gonna continue to pursue more with the county and put those out in the county? Or what's the thought process about bringing jobs here through this process?
I, I think that yes to both those questions. We're going to expand some of the, depending what the industrial is here. We have some spaces that would be, are really ready and set, like the tile factory, you know?
Well, it's not ready and set. You knew that was coming, didn't you? But anyway, sorry, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
But you know what I'm talking about, you know, we have those spaces and then we have what's gonna happen behind, uh, south of Dukes. And, uh, then I anticipate that, that we'll probably also see some things, and I know that there's some things coming into county. That would benefit us.
Okay.
And as we continue to grow, some, some of the agricultural property that surrounds us may be incorporated in it. But we wanna plan to make sure that number one, it's the industry we want, and number two, it's in the location that we want it to be. So that makes sense.
No, it does, thank you.
I'm just throwing this out there, the, to say the bed and breakfast, just the, the already established ones. When the zoning goes into effect, are those places gonna be grandfathered in?
Yes, so by law, anything that you designate as non-conforming, they need to have a letter. Right now, we minimize the amount of non-conformings, maybe one or two, and those are optional. So we took.
But like, we wouldn't put a battery next to one?
Correct.
Historical districts.
You can't change this.
No.
Do the historical districts have a certain classification?
I'm gonna ask that question actually, around historical district, you know, what's, how does that play into the?
Zoning.
It lays over the top of it.
It's an overlay.
It's an overlay.
If you wanna go.
No, 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 you don't have to, I just.
I was gonna, I was gonna show this off anyway.
Okay, if you're gonna show it, then that's fine, I was just curious how that works.
So this is y'all shiny new website, uh, dedicated right now, y'all get services from the county and Biz Monkey, which they're based out of Austin, Texas. We, it'll be y'all's local people, um, so everything that we just all talked about, we've integrated into a dedicated website that's open to the public. Uh, you can zoom into any property or address and just click on a parcel and it shows, it's pulling some, pulling some information that we've calculated, square footage, and, uh, it's an historical overlay or not. Um, and also some information from the county, so we're, we're hoping to part, continue to partner with the county on, uh, just getting easily accessible information to the public. The overlays, look on that tab. And. So right now, okay, I'll have to drop in the historic overlays, cause y'all are real. Right now, I'm showing, uh, we created a neighborhood conservation overlay. Because as we were working in this, we discovered a lot of houses, they're not non-conforming, but they weren't mixing with the zoning. They're a lot smaller than what the current zone would be. So we created this non, this, uh, neighborhood conservation overlay saying, even though by the book, y'all are non-conforming, if you're in this zone, you're fine, uh, if your house burns down, you can rebuild it just as it is. Uh, otherwise, if you are non-conforming and you get, your house gets hit by a tree or struck by lightning, um, you can't rebuild it as you had it before. It's, over fifty percent of your structure is damaged, you can't rebuild it again. And that's per state law. Um, but I can't fully answer your question, cause you asked about historic overlays, but they are on the map as of, uploaded. Um, in case of historic overlays, usually because it's an overlay, so it is the highest form of regulation. The base zone is kind of intact, but the historic overlay is gonna add more standards on top of it.
But to your same scenario, uh, there's a historic home on this side of the street, other side of the street, there's another house that's in a historic zone as well. Tree falls on it, damages half the house. What applies to them rebuilding that house? Do they have to rebuild according to historic? Because we've got some mix right now, we've got some homes that were built before the historic that, you know, were built in the seventies across the street from a home built in eighteen ninety. So if that house built in the seventies, something happens to it and it falls down and whatever, burns down, whatever. When they rebuild, do they have to rebuild just like whatever they want? Or do they have to conform to the historic districts? Okay, what are those?
It is spelled.
So they're going to have to build to the historic?
You have to be conducive to your name. So, so it's nineteen seventy eight house, you have to restore it older or nineteen seventy?
You can build a new house, you just have to, I mean, like you can't use pressed board, you have to use the concrete or, or hardy board or, you have to, I mean, if you wanna do brick, then you're doing break bits and.
We didn't adjust the historic ordinance or overlay, uh, but because that is an overlay, usually it sets the highest standard to go by, so you have to go by it. But that's already a built existing code. The or, the overlays that we created, one was a planned development order, uh, ordinance, or sorry, overlay. And that coincides with the north corridor strategic plan, and then this is your kind of protecting the existing neighborhood overlay. If you go back to the, uh, course, that's about, uh, but we can, we can circle back around to this or anything else that y'all have. But I can't take an opportunity without showing pictures of my kid. Well, not in the whole Jack.
Wait till he gets a baby sister.
Hope your big brother can, uh, or he, hopefully that'll get picked up.
He is cute.
Very good.
Alright, well, if y'all have any questions, we'll circle back around again, um, we can make changes prior to the fifteen, this comes to y'all officially.
This is super helpful, this G I S, this math that you put in here, because you look at, you look at Franklin CAD, you have no idea what it's on.
Yeah.
And I mean, this is gonna, this is going to take away a lot of headaches that we have.
It will, won't it?
Yeah, it really will.
And this is one call away, y'all call me, I'll make the change.
Are you trying to do this throughout the county too, are you trying to get the county to do this?
Uh, it's really just taking their information that they, they updated every year.
Yeah.
So, um, unless something goes down on their park, uh, we should be fine, but, um, we can, we can create our own unique data as well as the town. So we're not strapped to just the county, but they, they mainly have who owns it currently, uh, deed information, where they put a prestat.
I say, the county doesn't have like the same zoning, they're, they're almost nothing.
They don't, they don't have a zoning.
Yeah, I would say most counties don't.
But, but it's funny you should mention that because I had a conversation, part of the conversation we had about power protection.
Oh, yeah.
The other day with Marla was that, that I think that there's some recognition on part, at least some, some of the commissioners that the county needs a plan. And actually, I would mention it to you and Hunter about the possibility of working with the county and the city to do a strategic plan. And, but they could use a land use plan.
Well, sure they could, cause that'll, that, that will help exactly, because we're trying to figure out this whole, I don't wanna start a whole new conversation, but figure out this whole fire thing. And that's part of it, we need money.
We're hitting like, we're that hard.
I, I've talked to commissioners quite a bit on it, so, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Great work, John.
It's been a pleasure working with y'all.
Yeah, well, we've, we've enjoyed it too, it's, it has been great work. Ready for the public to see it once we get it formally in place, I, I really don't see pushback from what we're doing. I think people will really appreciate the things they'll help and add and protect value in, in their investments here too.
Absolutely.
And then just guiding our growth, we needed help in guiding our growth, cause right now, we're, it's totally open ended for whatever wants to show up and, I mean, within our range. But it is, we're very vulnerable not having this locked away really. Alright, anything else? Well, then I, we're, uh, this is all we have for tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep, well, I'll call from, uh, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion. Second, all in favor?
Alright.
Thank you, John.
For two, y'all. Getting called a second ago, keep the time, figure out what's changing to do. If you answered all the questions, I'm not gonna take other responsibility.
Let everybody know they can come to our.